Well, we're going to go ahead and start. It's 12:35. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth Planning Commission Work Session. Today's Tuesday, February the 6th. Ms. Chop, would you like to start?
Sure. So, our first case today is UP-2319, and the staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Valerie Malzone. I'm a senior planner with the City of Portsmouth. The application before you today is a request for a use permit to construct a three-unit townhouse development at 4423 King Street. The subject property is approximately .2 acres in size and is zoned urban residential, or UR. The property currently contains a two-story, approximately 1,882-square-foot detached single-family dwelling that was constructed in 1910. There are currently no off-street vehicle parking spaces on the property. The property is located within the AE9 flood zone and the resource management area of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area. The surrounding area consists of residential uses. Single-family dwellings zoned urban residential, or UR, surround the subject property to the north, south, east, and west. An eight-unit townhouse development zoned multifamily urban residential, or URM, is located to the east along the same block face as the subject property. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family residence and construct a three-unit townhouse development at 4423 King Street. An approved use permit is required for townhouse dwellings within the UR zoning district. Each townhouse unit will be two stories and will include a rear-loaded, single-car garage and a rear-single-car driveway to accommodate the two off-street vehicle parking spaces required for townhouse dwellings. The driveways will be accessed via a single-access road from Winchester Drive. The conceptual site plan and elevations also include covered front porches, concrete backyard patios, and six-foot white vinyl privacy fencing along the rear of the property. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as appropriate for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential uses. Staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The proposal meets several goals of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, including increasing the supply of income-diverse housing options. In addition, the applicant has made efforts to modify the proposed development to further meet the goals of the comprehensive plan. At the request of Planning Commission and the West Haven Civic League, the applicant has updated the proposed development since this application was deferred at the January 2nd Planning Commission public hearing to replace the front-loading garage and driveways with a rear-loading garage and rear driveways to be accessed from Winchester Road. To my knowledge, the planning department has received four public comments regarding this application. Three have been provided in the agenda packet and one as a paper copy prior to the meeting. I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Actually, I just have one question regarding, if I may, Madam Chair. The width of the second driveway there, is there any sort of code requirements there for that width? Because one's 12 and one's 12 and the other one's about two foot smaller. Is there any sort of requirements that...
Yeah. The minimum width for a single-car driveway is nine feet. Each parking space has to be nine feet wide and 18 feet in depth.
So, it meets that requirement?
I have a question. Since it's in the flood zone, when they have to grade the property, when they grade it, will it have any impact on the neighbor next door, which is 4417, and then 4418 and 4421, which are directly behind it?
I'm not familiar with the grading that's required for, to be in the flood zone, other than that it has to go away from the building. Julie, do you know anything about how it impacts?
That would be stormwater issue, not a flooding issue.
Okay.
Oh, so it would be in-site plan, they would?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right. Commissioners, any other questions?
No questions. I just applaud their flexibility when the request was made. And it does look beautiful, honestly. The new, the new design, the front-facing yard is really nice.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, we did receive a late email from the Civic League asking about the stormwater management, which I know that usually gets reviewed during site plan review and things about nature. So, all of their concerns should be addressed at that time, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next case is UP-23-21. Valerie, do you just want to explain why it's going through recommending another deferral on this application?
Yes. So, this is a request for a use permit for a shipping container at Chelsea Storage Yard at 3015 Airline Boulevard. We are recommending deferral of this application until the April 2nd Planning Commission public hearing because we are still waiting for a completed application. During the comprehensive review process, the city engineer determined that a traffic impact analysis would be required for this application to be heard by Planning Commission and City Council. So, we are still waiting on the TIA.
Commissioners, any questions? Nope?
No.
Okay.
All right. The next case we have is also Valerie Malzone as the staff coordinator, Chesapeake Bay Exception 23-01.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. My name is Valerie Malzone, and I'm a senior planner with the City of Portsmouth. The application before you today is a request for a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a swimming pool, patio/pool deck, and steps within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area, or RPA buffer at 4801 Templar Drive. Resource protection areas are comprised of tidal wetlands and shores, non-tidal wetlands connected and contiguous to water bodies with perennial flow, and the landward 100-foot buffer, which is further divided into a 50-foot seaward and a 50-foot landward buffer. Development within the Resource Protection Area is regulated by Chapter 9.1 of the Portsmouth City Code and the Virginia State Code. Development of an accessory structure such as a swimming pool or patio is not a permitted and exempt or an allowable land use within the 100-foot RPA buffer specified in Chapter 9.1(c). A Chesapeake Bay exception may be applied for to authorize an exception from the requirements of Section 9.110(c) for approval by Planning Commission should Planning Commission find the request meets the required development criteria. If appropriate, the Commission may request an amendment of the applicant's submittal to allow for a proposal that meets the intent of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. The subject property at 4801 Templar Drive is zoned general residential, or GR. The property is .39 acres in size and contains a 3,093-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an approximately 120-square-foot shed to the rear. An approximately 235-square-foot covered wood deck adjoins the dwelling to the rear. The residence was constructed in 1985, prior to the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and designation of resource protection areas. Approximately 65% of the property is located within the Resource Protection Area. The subject property is surrounded to the north, south, east, and west by single-family residential properties zoned general residential, or GR. A tributary of the western branch of the Elizabeth River borders the property to the north. The applicant is proposing to develop a 10-foot-by-20-foot in-ground swimming pool with an approximately 350-square-foot paver pool deck/patio to the rear of the existing dwelling. The proposed swimming pool and most of the patio will be located within the 50-foot landward RPA buffer. Approximately 30 square feet of the proposed patio will encroach into the 50-foot seaward RPA buffer. Existing brick steps, approximately 16 square feet in size, will be relocated from the rear of the dwelling to the proposed pool deck adjoining the existing covered wood deck. The proposed development will result in an approximately 534-square-foot net increase in the amount of impervious surface within the RPA. No trees or shrubs are proposed to be removed for the project. A Water Quality Impact Assessment, or WQIA, is required for all land disturbances within the RPA. In the submitted WQIA, the applicant indicates that the proposed development will result in 1,121 square feet of land disturbance within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area. The applicant proposes to mitigate this land disturbance by establishing three planting units. The quality and quantity and species selection of the proposed plants meets the recommendations of the DCR Riparian Buffers Modification and Mitigation Guidance Manual. The applicant has also included six additional small shrubs to exceed minimum mitigation requirements. Staff is recommending the approval of the proposed swimming pool within the 50-foot landward buffer of the Resource Protection Area. Staff also recommends approval of the request to remove the existing brick steps from the rear of the existing wood deck to construct wood steps along the west side of the deck. There does not appear to be a viable alternative location outside of the RPA buffer on the property for a swimming pool, and it appears that the proposed swimming pool has been located to minimize land disturbance within the 50-foot seaward RPA buffer. Further, the applicant does not propose to remove any existing vegetation and is exceeding the number of plantings required to mitigate for land disturbance within the RPA. Staff is recommending the denial of the proposed patio. Staff finds that due to its size, proposed use of impervious materials, and the encroachment into the 50-foot seaward buffer, the proposed patio exceeds the minimum land disturbance necessary to serve its function. Rather, staff is recommending a reduced four-foot wide apron around the perimeter of the swimming pool to be located entirely outside of the 50-foot seaward buffer. A four-foot wide apron appears to be a reasonable accommodation to allow for safe maintenance and maneuverability around the pool area. If approved by Planning Commission, staff has proposed several conditions within the staff report to minimize impacts to water quality. To my knowledge, the planning department has received one public comment regarding this application. The comment was distributed to the Planning Commission and staff prior to the meeting. This concludes my presentation. I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple, actually. So, the shed, is that an existing shed that's there?
Yes.
And did they go through the proper process to build that shed?
I am not sure. It was there as far as I looked back in the aerials, so I believe it may have been constructed before.
So, maybe the time of building, which would have been before the Chesapeake Bay...
No, okay. I didn't look back past 19...it would be 2002 or 1989. I didn't look back that far, but it had been there for a couple of years, so I'm not sure. I would have to go look at the tide mark cases.
Okay, because that's also built into the buffer.
Right.
So, that was kind of my first question. And if we approved, or the shed was approved, then why would we not even go with what's presented? Because it basically takes into the same amount of buffer is the question that I would have there, I guess. What makes one different than the other?
Yeah. I see. No, we did not look into the permitting pass of the shed.
Okay.
Or the covered wood deck.
And then the second question is, as you're making the alternate recommendation on the patio size, was that discussed with the homeowner as an option? And they said, "No, we wanted to roll the dice with this"? Or did they, you know, take any exception to your recommendation or even consider your recommendation, I guess is the question?
We didn't have that exact recommendation. At the time, they had did a pre-application conference with us before submitting their application. And during that conference, we told the applicant that it's more favorable of an ask to reduce the amount of impervious surface in the RPA buffer as much as possible. So, we recommended the use of impervious surface in the RPA and reducing the size of each item to the minimum necessary for it to serve its function. They did come back with this, said that they wanted to move forward with this. When we sent the planning staff report out, I did speak with the applicant again. She wanted to know if we would be amenable to maybe, like, switching the pool down to where it could be two feet on one side, six feet on the other. Our response was that we felt more comfortable with four feet all the way around, just because that's what...we spoke with the building official, and he agreed that's sort of what's standard for public pools, public and ground pools. So, we decided to stick with that, but I told the applicant that she was welcome to discuss that with you if that's something she wanted to consider to amend later on.
And I think my last question is, if I can ask one more, I'm sorry, it may be taking over. So, you're actually recommending approval of the swimming pool and the apron, but denial of the patio?
Yes. Like, I guess we're recommending approval of a modified patio because also the apron being four foot where the pool is now would go into the seaward buffer. So, we're actually recommending a four-foot wide apron around the pool and moving the whole thing southward so that the whole footprint is in the 50-foot landward buffer.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? I have one. So, sometimes these maps are really hard to read or land surveys. So, just for the sake of doming it down for me, the line right there that runs just past the pool, is that where the seaward starts?
Yeah, let me point...this laser pointer doesn't work on the...
Yes, if you don't mind, because I drove by there and...
This is the seaward line.
Okay.
So, this little, that's the 30 square feet going into the seaward. This little...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I do have one follow-up as well. I also went by the place and did the Google Map review, and it looks like there are pools everywhere in this neighborhood. So, I guess the concern is application, one of this, of the Chesapeake Bay rules, one to the other. It looks like they all kind of start and end in a very similar spot, too. So, where would we be considered arbitrary if we approve one but, you know, or disallow one and have allowed the four or five neighbors around? Jeff, this might be a question for you.
Well, this is a question often comes up in historic district reviews because people have done stuff illegally in the past or before historic regulations come up. And what we always say to those boards, and I'd say it applies here, too, is that you need to just look at the application that you have in front of you. We don't know exactly how the other houses came by, what they have. So, I think just consider this application and don't worry about the implications for other properties.
Goes against everything I've trained to do, Jeff. But thank you for your answer.
Commissioners, anything else? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Ms. Chop?
Okay. Our next case is UP-23-23, and the staff coordinator is Bill Lanfair.
It's yours.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I'm Bill Lanfair, principal planner with the City of Portsmouth. The next use permit application before you will allow operation of a child daycare center, sorry, day center in an existing building on approximately .49-acre parcel located at 309 Columbia Street in the downtown D1-T5 urban center zoning sub-district and the downtown design overlay district. The existing one-story building was constructed in 1973 and contains approximately 12,746 square feet of floor area. The building was previously occupied by the Portsmouth Police Training Academy and Printing Company. The surrounding area consists of residential land and office uses, including general and professional offices. To the north of the subject property, across Columbia Street, and to the east and south are general and professional office uses in the downtown D1-T5 zoning sub-district. To the west, across Court Street, are multifamily buildings in the downtown D1-T4 zoning sub-district. The applicant's project narrative states that she's currently operating a learning center on Turnpike Road. That's part of the EVMS Quality Birth-to-Five Program and a cohort of childcare centers implementing UVA's Early Childhood Care and Education Provider Curriculum. Her intention is to provide the same program at this location. The Child Day Center proposes to operate Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with 120 children ranging from 12 weeks of age to 12 years old. A team of 16 to 20 teachers will rotate shifts between the hours of operation with no more than seven teachers on the largest shift. As shown on the conceptual site plan, the parking lot is proposed to include five off-street parking spaces. Additional parking for employees is available at the public county street parking garage located two blocks away. The pickup and delivery of children will be accommodated along Guardian Court, which abuts the property to the east. As the street is presently posted for no parking, this drop-off arrangement requires approval by the city engineering department, which just has been given their approval. An outdoor playground measuring approximately 30 feet by 55 feet for a total of approximately 1,890 square feet will be located on the south side of the building with direct access. The playground will feature an artificial turf surface enclosed by a 3-and-1/2-foot-high fence with additional protection from vehicles provided by bollards. During warmer months, a portable shade structure may be erected on the playground. Interior building improvements will include reconfiguration of several interior walls, remodeling of the bathrooms, new flooring, light fixtures, and paint. Due to the property's location within the downtown design overlay district, any future existing alterations to the site, including the proposed playground and fencing, visible from the public right-of-way, will require an approved certificate of appropriateness by the downtown design committee. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for Mixed Use Downtown. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's use permit request with conditions. With those conditions, the proposed use will be consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and will be appropriate in this location. To our knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding this application. I will now stand by for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. Commissioners, any questions?
I do have one brief comment from Ms. Freiter. And I continue to thank you for trying to find a more suitable place. Because once you ask, look, they're last spot, there are a lot of problems.
Yes, indeed.
But I just wanted to thank her for staying, wanting to stay in Portsmouth, wanting to continue to invest, be a part of this. This is far much better place, I think, for her to operate out of.
Any questions? I have a question. These bollards that are going to be installed...
Yes.
Are they going to be placed in front of the playground or just in front of the building?
Well, actually, the playground will be surrounded by the 3-and-1/2-foot-tall fence. And then the intention is either just within that fence or outside of the fence, you'll have the bollards placed as well. So, the intent is to make sure that no vehicles, when they're pulling in or backing out, can actually...
Hit the kids inside the playground.
Right, back into that, right. The fence might be substantial enough to provide that, the necessary protection, but the applicant is wanting to be very sure and careful about it, and so is also proposing the bollards.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything else? No? Ms. Chop? Anything else?
I just wanted, I have one quick update. I just wanted to let you guys know, as you look through the packet, we have recently started shortening, reducing the legal ads that are sent out for each application that are advertised within the paper. Last year, the General Assembly modified the public notice requirements, and they allowed us to take out a lot of information. And with inflation and rising costs, we're taking advantage of that allowance that we have. And so, just if anybody has questions when they see it in the paper or if, when they see it in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, then this meeting is...yes, ma'am?
I just want to bring up, one of our commissioners had the opportunity to attend the Certified Planning Meeting this, January the 30th. It was Commissioner Taylor. If she would just kind of briefly, you know, let us know how it went. We had one little hiccup, but I think we, she's a trooper. She didn't freak out.
I'm used to problems.
And things happen, so...but could you just share with us?
Yes. So, it was very informative. I got to meet peers from all over Virginia counties that I didn't even know exist. I was educated on what our primary role is, all the information that we need to know, take in. So, the course lasts from January to about April. I go back for two more days in April, and it's been very eye-opening. And what I do learn from there, I hope to be able to bring it back here and help Portsmouth grow as much as possible.
Very awesome.
Thank you. Thanks for going.
Yeah.
No problem.
And we do have two other commissioners that will take advantage of the course, which is going to be virtual, and that starts in October.
Okay.
Okay. So, I think all of the other commissioners on the board have already had opportunity to attend. So, we're happy about that.
Okay, excellent. With that said, the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you back in the City Council chambers at 1:30.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically.
Five, five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. As a side note, Madam Secretary and Commissioners, Commissioner Jigetz is absent today due to the passing of her sister, and I would just like to let her know that she is in our thoughts.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hmm?
Members that are planning...
Commissioners, we, before you are the minutes of the January 2nd, 2024 public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the minutes as presented.
A second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the January 2nd, 2024 public hearing, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, at 12:30 p.m. City Council Chamber Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m. City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their March 12, 2024 public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. This item was deferred from the January 2nd Planning Commission meeting. UP-23-19 West Haven, Joseph Pulli with Arnold Marketing Services requests a use permit to construct a three-unit townhouse development on an approximately 0.22-acre parcel at 4423 King Street in the urban residential, or UR, zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential uses. The property is owned by Arnold Marketing Services and is further described as Tax Map 308, Parcel 75. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Can you speak a little bit louder?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, and other members of the Planning Commission. My name is Joe Pulli, and I'm here on behalf of the owner, Arnold Marketing Services. I appreciate the opportunity to briefly present our use permit request at 4423... I appreciate the opportunity to briefly present our use permit request at 4423 King Street. As I had indicated in the January public hearing, our request is to remove the old house, which is in disrepair, and to build a new three-unit townhouse, which we feel will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. At the previous meeting, a concern came up regarding the front loading garages. As a result of that conversation, we had our engineer and designer change the layouts to depict rear loading garages with a shared drive aisle at the rear of the site. We also added walkways from each of the townhouse units to the sidewalk in King Street. I had heard a comment in the informal about stormwater, and I can assure the commission that during detailed site plan review, our engineer will meet all the requirements for stormwater, finished floor elevation, flood plain, all the city requirements for development. The staff still recommends approval of the permit with attached conditions. The owner has seen the comments, the conditions, and is in full agreement with them. The proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comp Plan, and the use permit request also supports a citywide strategic housing plan, which recommends updating the city's housing stock with modern housing. Therefore, we respectfully request that the Planning Commission grant the approval of our use permit so that we can go on to City Council. I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Pulli. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner G.
I just want to say thank you. This is a good example of feedback and a two-way communication between the city and our residents, and finding a positive outcome. I just want to say personally, I think these, the new design is beautiful with the way they have the yard in the front. It really seems inviting to the community. So I just want to say, I thank both the commission, the, I want to thank the planning department, I want to thank, most importantly, the builders for this new design.
Thank you, Mr. G. I'd also like to compliment the planning staff who worked with us from day one. I think I met in March or April of last year to see what the feelings would be for this project, and they've been very good at working with us and giving us feedback as we moved along.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? No? Okay. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-19. We have no registered speakers. However, if there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Pulli, you could have a seat now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second with conditions. Commissioner Hines.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve UP-23-19 with conditions. Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions, UP-23-19, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions. Our next item, UP-23-21 Hattonville, Left Burner, requests a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on an approximately 5.4 acre parcel at 3015 Airline Boulevard in the light industrial IL zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Burner Properties, 3015 Airline LLC, and is further described as Tax Map 574, Parcel 3. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. This application, no, yeah, staff recommends a deferral of this application to the April the 2nd, 2024 public hearing. However, if there's someone here, the public hearing is still open. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, this is your opportunity to come forward, and you have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, we will continue to keep this public hearing open until our April the 2nd, 2024 Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, I need a motion and a second to defer UP-23-21 to April 2nd, 2024.
Madam Chair, if I may just make a brief comment before I make that motion. I just wanted to thank the, there is a very involved citizen that sent us some very detailed concerns surrounding this application. I know staff is looking into that, but I wanted to publicly thank the citizen for taking that amount of time, energy, and effort to bring this to our, to our attention. With that said, I'd like to make a motion that we defer the UP-23-21 into the April 2nd Planning Commission meeting. Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a motion and a second to defer to April 2nd, 2024.
Motioned and second to defer, and you will be voting electronically. This item is deferred by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, CP-CBE 23-01 Hatton Point Estates. Ainsley and Michael Hendrick request a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a swimming pool and patio within the 100-foot buffer of the resource protection area at 4801 Templar Drive. The property is zone general residential GR and is further described as Tax Map 740, Parcel 19. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium density, single-family residential uses. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Ainsley Hendricks. My husband, Michael Hendricks.
Good afternoon.
We're the homeowners at 4801.
Y'all do me one favor, please, because I want to make sure that everybody can hear you. Kind of lean into the microphone and talk loud, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ainsley, Michael Hendricks, we're the homeowners of 4801 Templar Drive. We are here before you seeking to construct a swimming pool on our property. We purchased our house in 2015, and our careers have gotten increasingly busy, and we're seeking to have a small area of respite to enjoy. We did attend the work session, so we do know you all are aware of the plan and are prepared to go ahead and address some of the concerns that were presented. The first area to address is the shed. Unfortunately, we bought the home in 2015. It was there when we bought it. I do not know the status of the shed, or what process was taken to build that. We have reviewed the Planning Commission's recommendations. I did speak with Valerie. She's been incredibly helpful throughout this entire process. Coming in as a homeowner is very intimidating and overwhelming with this process. She did mention that that was merely a recommendation that they were looking at. I was a little bit concerned with the recommendation because of the fact that we are providing a significant amount of buffer restoration, which to my understanding is the requirement in order to request an exception. We are currently at 1,121 square feet to include the 300 or approximately square-foot patio, and we're proposing over 1,400 square feet of buffer mitigation. The comment was also made that if it's good enough for a public swimming pool, that it's good enough for our home. And this is our home, and I don't feel that that's appropriate. A four-foot apron is also approximately 304 square feet, which is just short of what we're proposing to put in. So whether it is an apron on all four sides, or if we move or are able to extend it onto the access area of the home, it seems that it would be approximately comparable in square footage. You know, most people, when they build a pool deck, they do allow for a patio to have a grill, or chase lounges, or furniture. The average chase lounge is about six and a half, excuse me, six and a half feet in linear length, which a four-foot apron would not accommodate. So, you know, we did speak about some of those things, and she did mention, again, it was a recommendation, but we would like to have the plan considered as it is there. We are willing to, you know, potentially look at some compromises if we need to, but we don't feel that the footprint, as you can see, the patio is over to the left here, right off of the garage door, so it's an access point to the pool. And we don't feel that that small little area there is going to have as much of a significant impact, particularly with the buffer mitigation. There was also some comments speaking to the neighborhood. As you can see, this improvement is par for the course for our neighborhood. Almost every single neighbor in this neighborhood has a pool. Some have gone through extensive renovations. Again, we've lived here for eight years. Several of the houses have sold, and we've watched that. We cruise this waterway on our boat, you know, all the time, and we see our neighbors there, which maybe is why we're a little envious at this point in making this request. One of the owners at the corner of 3604 Templar Court, that house was built in 1990. He is one of the largest construction owners in the area. He has a gorgeous hardscape that is also there and relatively new, as well as the house on 3304, excuse me, 3333 Courtney Road. Had a pool built recently. Whether or not, again, to speak whether it was done illegally or not, it certainly hasn't been torn down. And that is right there on the corner around from us as well. I've printed pictures of some of the areas, as you can see on, and you can probably Google map or have already. Most areas, when you come out of the access point of the back of the home, they do have extensive patios right there. And upon speaking with my landscape architect, as well as who works with CBPA's in other areas, that homeowners are typically allowed a 10-foot apron in the CBPA on one side as well to account for a diving board. We don't plan to do that. As you can see, we're only looking for a 10-by-20 pool. We are really trying to be respectful of the CBPA, be respectful of our home and our yard, as well as to put forward the plan for everything there. We just want to enjoy our home, and we want to enjoy some of the luxuries that we feel that we're allowed in that instance. So in closing, you know, for us, that's where we are with those points. I hope I've addressed some of the concerns and some of the questions that were, that were brought up. We recognize there's not really a lot of other areas to place a pool. That wouldn't be in the C-word buffer. The, almost the entirety of this project is built to maximize the space outside of the C-word buffer, with the exception of that small little piece, which, again, we are removing those brick steps to give back to the C-word buffer that are already there.
No, I just appreciate everybody's consideration and timing for this. This is very new to both of us. It's a great experience to learn this process, and, you know, everybody's been very helpful thus far, and I just appreciate everybody's consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Hendricks. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicants? Commissioner Curry?
Madam Chair, am I able to see the pictures that she brought?
I'm sorry?
Am I able to see the pictures that she brought?
I don't see why not.
These are just a few of the immediate houses on the left and the right to us. There are some across the waterway. The neighbors to the left and right of us, the left has an, excuse me, an above-ground pool with a concrete patio. To the right, that concrete patio was just constructed. I don't know if it's permitted or not, but it is there. I don't want to call people out, but, you know, it kind of does come to that point where we could do things illegally or legally, and we are. We are really trying to do this the right way. Our neighbor to the right does have a pool while it's not being currently operated. It's in a little bit of disrepair. It is still there. Two doors down, there's a pool. The house next door to that has a pool. The house next door to that has a pool, and so forth.
Commissioner Curry, do you have any questions after reviewing the pictures?
No, ma'am.
Commissioners, did anybody else want to take a look at those?
I've seen it on the set.
Okay. Commissioner Hines, did you have a question?
Actually, not really a question, but more of a comment. First and foremost, thank you for doing this the right way. It's very easy to do things the wrong way. And I believe y'all have put together a very strong case for doing the things the right way, going through the right steps, listening help to be able to get through this process. I tend to agree with you that the four-foot around is, you know, you know, almost not reading, meeting the spirit of what you're trying to do here. And I understand that, and I appreciate it. And also, you're right in terms of your sizing of pool. I think you also did keep in mind the spirit of the Chesapeake Bay Protection Act. This is why I plan on supporting your request as presented, not with the staff recommendation regarding the four-foot, or any other thing that is contrary to the, to this, as it is presented. I think we have to ensure that people have ability to recreate in Portsmouth. I think that's an important thing as well. And even whether that be outside of their home or in their home, that they have a quality of life. So I will be siding with you in your presentation, and I guess until, you know, somebody can tell me otherwise, I would assume that those pools were built in accordance with the law.
Of course.
And that if your neighbors have encroached in such ways, and even in some cases, way further down, closer to the waterway. I don't see why we should not support that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Ms. Malzone, could you, do you mind elaborating a little bit for clarity as to why you are requesting a four-foot apron? Mr. and Ms. Hendricks, if you, okay. It's not on.
It's working now.
Is on and down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Valerie Melson. I'm a senior planner at the City of Portsmouth. So we recommended the four-foot wide apron because we had talked about one of the review standards for Chesapeake Bay exceptions, is that it's the minimum necessary to afford relief. And we had discussed the patio and what would be the minimum land disturbance to afford relief. The four feet came after a conversation with the building official. There is no standard in the swimming pool ordinance about how big a recommended apron or required apron would be for an in-ground swimming pool in, in somebody's backyard, a private in-ground swimming pool. So initially, I kind of wanted to make it smaller than that to encroach even less and save even more impervious area, but he did say four feet was standard for public pools. We had no other standards to go by, so even though it was a little bigger than we wanted, we went with the four feet just to be safe.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? No? Okay, thank you, Ms. Malzone. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Hendricks. We appreciate it. Commissioners, if there, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Regina. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-23-01. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, this is your opportunity to come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Robert Cross, 547 Florida Avenue. All right, the CBPA district is delineated by resources, okay. So Chesapeake Bay Prevention Act. I don't see how their pool would affect in any way the, where is it? Runoff? What do I got? Hold on. Lost my spot. Lost my spot. I don't see how it's gonna affect and retard runoff, prevent erosion, filter non-point pollutants. I don't see a problem with it. Everybody else has a pool in that area, you should give it to them. It'll, it'll enhance the property.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, if there's no further discussion, we are in need of a motion. This application does have conditions, including those set forth by staff, and for clarification purposes, do include the four-foot apron.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve CBE dash twenty-three dash zero-one with conditions?
To include the four-foot apron.
And to include the four-foot apron.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second. Commissioner, Commissioner Hines, did you have a question?
Madam Chair, I'd like to issue an alternate motion. I move that we approve, uh, CBE dash twenty-three dash zero-one, uh, removing the four-foot buffer around the perimeter and accepting the conceptual site plan as in our packet.
Okay, we have a first and a second with the four-foot apron, and you would like to modify it without the four-foot apron, is that correct?
Actually, I believe it's an alternate motion. I believe in Robert's rules, this would take precedent, correct, Attorney Miller?
Yes, that's correct. Um, I would like to clarify, though, uh, as to the conditions that are there now, the motion would be to approve with all the conditions that are there, except the ones that are inconsistent, uh, with removing the four-foot buffer requirement.
Yes, sir, that would be approving with the conditions, and, um, the conceptual site plan would rule in terms of any of those space areas that we're talking about.
Any inconsistency with the?
Yeah, so, so any inconsistency in terms of what's in the proposed conditions, in terms of space, the site plan would be the ruling document in terms of space.
Okay, I, I've got it, but I wanna make sure everybody else. Commissioners, any questions about Mr., Commissioner Curry?
I would've went along with, with Commissioner Hines, with, so I totally agree with what he's saying. Uh, so, yeah, I, I'll go, whatever we go, that's where I'm going.
So Commissioner Hines made the motion, Commissioner G. seconded it without the notation of the four-foot apron.
Going as the original plan.
And so, Madam Secretary, I guess that now we need everybody else to, to vote, correct?
Well, point of clarity, can, as a maker of the original motion, he can withdraw his motion and just the alternate motion would go forward?
Uh, actually, I think it's simplest if we simply vote on the motion that's pending.
Yes.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second. Commissioner Hines, Commissioner G., second.
Motion and second to approve CBE dash twenty-three dash zero-one with the present conditions and adding without the four-foot buffer.
As noted in the staff report.
As noted in the staff report.
And just also, just another point of clarity on that, there is, the staff report does recommend denial of the patio, this would be approval of the patio as presented as well.
Okay. So, in the staff report, there is a denial for the patio. So now you're adding the patio as the?
As a point of clarity, just the, anything that is in conflict with the staff report, I'm asking that this would become, the conceptual site plan would become our basis of approval.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure it's completely clear.
Okay. Commissioners, are you clear?
Crystal clear. Just as I can see outside.
Okay. Madam Secretary?
And you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of four to two. Our next item, UP dash twenty-three dash twenty-three Downtown Towanda Freiter, a Gentle Touch Learning Center LLC, requests a use permit to operate a child-day center on an approximately zero-point-four-nine acre parcel located at three-oh-nine Columbia Street and the downtown urban center, D-one-T-five zoning sub-district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by Printers Craft Press Inc. and is further described as Tax Map seven, parcel one-oh-four. The staff coordinator is Bill Landfair. Will the applicant or a representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon. My name is Towanda Freiter, I'm the director and owner of Gentle Touch Learning Center. I have been teaching in Portsmouth Public School for fourteen years. I've been operating childcare center for the past eight years in Portsmouth. We are currently proposing to place a childcare center at three-oh-nine Columbia Street. Gentle Touch Learning Center is proposing to have a learning center that operates from Monday through Friday, from six AM until six PM. The center will admit children from the age of twelve weeks up to twelve years old. We propose having a total of a hundred-and-twenty children with a team of sixteen to twenty teachers rotating shifts between the hours of six AM to six PM. Gentle Touch Learning Center will be using eleven thousand square feet with, of the building space, and forty by forty-three square feet for the outside parking area for playground. Currently, our center on Turnpike Road is a part of the Virginia Quality Birth-to-Five Program, which implements by Eastern Virginia Medical School, and we are also a part of the cohorts of the childcare centers that are implemented in the Curriculum Streaming Three, that is offered by the Center for Advanced Studies of Teaching and Learning at the University of Virginia as a curriculum option offered through the partnership with the Virginia Department of Education. As an early childhood care education provider, we would like to, the opportunity to implement the same program in the south side and downtown neighborhood. Studies have shown that children who receive and approve preschool curriculum education are more likely to form better habits of going to school regularly and are ready for the kindergarten curriculum. Currently, our school system struggles with the chronic absentees, and having a program that is close to home that gives parents the convenience of dropping off their child at our center before going to work would be helpful. Our students who are in the public school system receive assistance with homework daily, along with tutoring. We have also arranged with the transportation system to get some of the students from the south side location to our school, after-school program for tutoring. We are also having summer camp readiness program for our school-age students to prepare them for the next grade level. Living in Portsmouth for almost twenty years, I am aware of the flooding that takes place in the downtown area. The building is located at the corner of Columbia Street and Court Street. Therefore, when Court Street is flooded, parents would be able to enter from the Crawford Street and drive down to Columbia to pick up their children when we call for an evacuation of the building. The center will implement a flood plan, management plan, in line with what is shown on page three of the two thousand fifteen flood plan management and receptive loss plan. Gentle Touch Learning Center will follow the guidelines set by the city for operating a childcare center. In the floor plan of the building, we are proposing to open up three walls, installing three toilets, three hand sinks for the restroom area, and two hand sinks in the classrooms. We are in contact with the fire department, environmental health services, and the engineering department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freiter. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner G.?
This is gonna sound kinda like a broken record. I wanna say first, thank you for coming back with this plan, and this is a, amazing usage of this facility, uh, especially, I, leaps and bounds above the previous location, honestly, and really excited to see you move forward with, with this business, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hines?
I'm gonna sound like a broken record again, but, uh, same thing I said in the work session, that I'm, I'm very happy that you've been able to find a more suitable location. Uh, I did have actually just a, a real brief question, though. Um, is the plan to actually operate two centers now? Or is?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we are going to be doing after-school program tutoring with our Douglas Park kids because they really do need some help.
I was gonna say that the, the two locations is, um, definitely a need in our, in our city, so, um, I just wanted to give you, just, give you a shout-out to thank you for expanding your business here in Portsmouth and staying, staying with us and working through and finding a much better location, so thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Curry?
I am gonna be a broken record. Thank you for coming back and showing your consistency to the city of Portsmouth and to our children. We, it is great, needed, and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman?
Hi, uh, I just, I just have a question. Um, in the, in the work session, it was noted that, um, the Department of Engineering was waiting to see about the parking, um, on, uh, I guess it was Court Street or Columbia Street for parking?
Guardian Street.
What's gonna happen if they do not allow you?
They, they did.
They did allow you?
Yes, they sent us a response last week.
Okay, okay, I was under the impression that we were waiting on them to, to do that. Okay, thank you, good.
Commissioners, any additional questions? No? Okay. If there is no more discussion, we are in, oh, wait a minute, I'm, I'm doing it again. I would just rush right on through this, don't I? I'm sorry, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Ms. Freiter.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash twenty-three dash twenty-three. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Troy Johnson. I am the president of Print Craft Press Incorporated, currently the owner of the building, which is under contract for sale to Mr. George Luizzo, who's here today. Clearly, I have an interest in you all approving the use for this property as a daycare, so I don't necessarily need to remind you of some very important facts, like the country is in a daycare crisis. Beginning in September of last year, there was a steep federal drop-off in funds available to daycare, and they're estimating, uh, three million children that could lose access to quality daycare. Seventy thousand daycare programs are projected to close in the coming months. That's causing, uh, a lot of parents to cut work hours or quit work altogether. Businesses are losing valuable employees, and state economies are losing tax revenue due to this measure. I don't have to tell you how convenient having a daycare would be to downtown businesses and offices, uh, shipyard workers, workers at the Portsmouth Naval Hospital. So, um, parents there would have a wonderful location to be able to drop their kids off and quickly get to work or to home. But what I can tell you is that, um, Ms. Freiter is not the first person to recognize this as a good location for daycare. We operated a printing shop in the adjacent building, three-oh-five Columbia Street, until twenty nineteen, and at that point, we closed the business down because, let's frankly, the printing business not what it used to be. So, at that point, I was attempting to rent out the property to a viable tenant. We had multiple people interested in opening a daycare at that location at that time, which was right next door to the three-oh-nine building. Why didn't any of that come to fruition? COVID. This was late in twenty nineteen. Few months later, the whole country was shut down, no one was opening daycares or any other businesses, for that matter. So, Ms. Freiter, her timing is good because, uh, as you may know, the Police Training Academy was formerly in that building, and they moved out August a year ago. So, when the Police Training Academy moved into that building, we built it out as a classroom-type setting, so the interior of the building is ideally laid out for a daycare, large, open rooms, uh, wide hallways, uh, plenty of room for, uh, little toddlers to play and learn, so. I just wanna express my support for the measure, and I thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Commissioner Hines?
May I ask the city attorney a question, please?
Absolutely.
Mr. Johnson's appearance kind of surprised me because we actually have a working relationship, um, being that he is the property owner. Uh, I don't have any personal gain here in the transaction going through, but I just wanted you to rule in on if there's any potential conflict of interest in me, um, taking a vote on this.
If there's no financial relationship here, then I don't believe there's any conflict of interest.
Thank you for allowing me to put that on record.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to speak, you may come forward, you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second with conditions.
Madam Chair, I make a move to approve UP dash twenty-three dash twenty-three with conditions. Second?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions UP dash twenty-three dash twenty-three, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with condition. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I do believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, will there be any further business?
No, Madam Chelley.
Ms. Chop, is there any further business? Okay. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.